This conference will now be recorded.
.............................................................................................
...... Jim? Almost. Oh, so audio's not working.
Yeah, my audio, my audio's not working. I don't know if you can hear me, but it's, Karen's not working for her either, so something's wrong with the audio.
So the time.
Any ears now?
Yeah. Yeah, it's working now.
Alright, so we did roll calls around you, Jim, for meeting minutes and claims.
Say again, Rachel, I'm sorry.
We're on, we're approving roll call for meeting minutes and claims.
Yeah, aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion passes. County attorney, general discussion.
One thing I want to mention is, uh, on the New Haven property, I see that's up for the day. I also see that Amanda put together some information. I don't know exactly, um, what plans were for today. I think it might, what I would prefer to do, um, I talked with Sydney about this. I think it's probably good to try and get some kind of an idea of what fair market value on that place would be. I think that the value from, uh, or is it the assessor? Uh, I remember, I think that's probably, it sounds pretty close, I think, but, you know, there's sometimes a difference between those two, between fair market value and assessed value. So, I've got a plan. What I want to try and do is talk to somebody who I think can establish, you know, a fair market value. I want to take that information that Amanda did, incorporate that into my request because it's probably going to make a difference. Alright, I mean, um, so I want to find out what, um, that is. And I think that's something we're probably going to need to know before any action is taken. So, um, I think it's best to, uh, give me a chance to find that out before we go with her.
Very good. Any else, uh, county attorney? Alrighty, Sheriff update.
I don't have anything for you this morning. What's your questions for me? Good, thank you.
Department, you have discussion?
Discussion.
Uh, yeah, I wanted to let you guys know that, um, tomorrow through Friday, I will not be in my office. Friday, I'm taking a personal day. Um, and then Wednesday and Thursday, I have a two-day conference down in Waterloo, for my job. Just wanted to let you guys know and let the public know that if they call, or if you stop by, I won't be there tomorrow through Friday.
Do we have a plan for when you're off, for to keep your office open, or?
Hasn't been discussed any further than what I've talked to you guys about. That's kind of on you guys to figure out. If you want someone in my office, I don't really know if there's going to be a need for it, but that's something that you guys on your own should probably discuss is, that's how I feel about it. I don't know if there's going to be a need for it really, but, um, I know that home health has offered to take phone calls, but other than that.
But I didn't have to make agenda and discuss it?
Somebody should answer phone calls for your turn, for phone calls, you know? There's, there's, there'll be things come up.
It's usually pretty slow in the winter, to be honest, but.
Alright.
Mark, I have one thing if I could.
Oh, of course.
So, in, in looking at county policy, um, the last time per diem or, or meal, reimbursements was looked at was 2002. And so when I send guys to training now, they come back and, and what the county allows doesn't cover their, their meals. It gets nine dollars maybe for lunch and for food or supper or something. That might be something we want to look at, until it agrees. Um, I can bring some recommendations to you in the next week or so, or you guys give that some thought. Twenty, twenty-two years behind the curve, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe need to do some adjustment there, what that looks like, you know, certainly be up to you guys, but, food for thought, we can talk more about it next week. I'll, I'll grab that policy section and bring it, and, uh, then I'll have some recommendations and then we can maybe go from there.
And add that on the agenda too, for discussion and action.
Definitely, thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds like it's outdated, yeah, yep.
Alright, any other discussion? County engineer update.
Morning. The asphalt paving we did, we got that done last week. They did some painting. They still need to put some shoulder rock down and finish the painting. They probably need to adjust some of the painting a little bit. Looks like they got a little narrow on some lanes on the curves that we, you know, but, we, that taken care of. Uh, last week, or Friday, I took quotes for some new dump trucks, or they probably won't show up until the next fiscal year, so we'll adjust them, but just going through and evaluating those quotes now, there's a lot of options there. There's a lot of things that we quoted we can't get because of manufacturers', um, limitations on providing certain pieces of equipment, such as there's allocations for Allison transmissions, which a lot of the allocations are gone when they open up, some of these dealers, when they, when they get these allocations, open up the, they claim them, and in two days their allocation's used up, and then they go back to their own. Anyway, so, um, we'll evaluate what, what best fits the county's needs on some trucks, and maybe by next week or the following week, we'll have some recommendations for purchase of some trucks for next year. Salt shed's done, I think we've got, we're starting to fill that back up now, so we can get that ready. Get our yard cleaned up a little bit. And grout scouts is pretty much done in the county. Got them looking at another, a little bridge, uh, project that we might have them do yet, uh, if they're willing to do it. So, other than that, there's the update for the secondary roads. I did put on the agenda discussion of a, of a professional service agreement amendment, and this is for that bridge on 105 where we had a lot of difficulty with the construction, the contractor. So, you'll see the additional fees are for, uh, thirty-three thousand dollars. On the sheet, there's explanations of what happened. A lot of it had to do with, um, contractor coordination and additional things that were not, you know, abutment, substructures, things like that, that were not accounted for because we were unknown at the time of design and construction. So, a lot of it was soils and additional time spent on evaluating, um, what that meant to the design of the bridge. There was some contractor issues that the WHGS took care of in the background that took some time. So, I don't know that it's unreasonable that the, the fees are what they are, considering there were sixteen extra days of, uh, the contract extended sixteen extra days and a lot of, uh, communication to try to get this project closed out with the contractor. So, I don't have any questions, but I'm going to recommend that we get this professional service agreement amendment approved and paid.
Sarah, wet period in there too, that one they, that they couldn't work?
Yeah, they're not, if they're, it's been a while now. I think there was a little bit of wet period, but we don't charge those working days. So, there wasn't, uh, anybody on site either. So, working days are only charged when there's days that are conducive to work. So if it rained out or it was too wet, nobody's on site. We're not charging anybody, or they're not confirming the business, so. It was a nightmare of a project.
Drive steer we had last year.
What's that?
It was a drive steer we had last year.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember if it was one episode where we did get a little bit of rain through there. I can't remember. When it was closed, if we had any rain or not. There was a little bit of flooding that came up, I think, through the backside, but it was quick, and it's kind of early on, I believe. My memory's not very good, so.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we only charge the working days when they're able to work on site.
So, we have a motion to approve this. Was it E21 amendment?
Some.
Motion is our second. I'm sorry. Any other discussion?
Roll call, Todd. Jim?
Aye.
Sydney?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye. That's all I have for you guys today.
Nothing else, engineer? Alright. Well, we have few minutes before the public hearing. We move down to discussion of possible action on sidewalk leveling. Dave going to come in, or? No? Quote American Water Works? Nothing, no Dave?
Spot online.
I haven't looked at those spots. I know he's talked about mudjacking them, and, uh, that's a viable way to do it. After thinking about it, I don't know how severe they are, but it might be something we contact either Randall or, uh, North Iowa Wall Saw. Let's see if, see if it's something they could actually just, uh, grind down or saw rather than mud jacket. So it's just an option to think about.
You want me to?
Can I make a comment on that? I, I looked at the sidewalk a little bit.
Sure.
I think just the way things are settled, I don't think there's proper drainage if we just grind it down. I think everything's settled enough that the water just can't get away the way it needs to. I think sit there, but I think Dave even said he's got to clean out one of the saw joints to get the water to drain out to the parking lot, which probably isn't a good thing.
No.
You've got that kind of water.
Lifting it up would be the best thing?
I would say lifting it or replacing it, but getting the water to drain in the parking lot isn't the important thing. Otherwise, the water sets in there, freezes, and all of a sudden it's just. Yeah, I agree. But I don't know what replacement cost is either. I, you know, I don't know if it's going to be, I, I can't imagine it'd be cheaper than, than jacking it, but there are a lot of saw joints in that area, and you've got to bring it up. I think in some locations, we could be talking almost two inches or a little bit more, depending. When you can see the, the old, the old cast sidewalk location, it's got to come up quite a bit to get it to drain. Yeah, usually this is cheaper than replacing. It can be. But, like I said, I don't know what replacement cost is, but I know when I looked at it, just when, and we were talking about getting grout scouts in there, it does have, I think there's a drainage problem there.
He's coming.
And on the one area, we've had a work in Scottsdale, we monitored that somebody tripped, so we probably should go take care of it sooner or later.
Well, okay.
I don't know. Spots for American Water Works to lift, uh, few spots, that's what you'd recommend then?
I think so. Between the two, he took a lot more time studying and, uh, seemed more professional.
Yeah, yeah. Pretty good there on the other. We're very, let's see their work.
We probably want to add that other spot too, that they.
As long as they're here, I think we should do both. And it's in the budget.
David, you say when you rain in front of Sheriff's Office, you had to kind of clean that saw joint out to get the water to drain.
Right, that figures into it. The guy said it'll help, may not a hundred percent solve that, but it's got to be better than having
Trying to get the water.
An inch of water set there. Yeah, that was my main. Then when you start looking, you know, you see more.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So, we have a motion to approve both of these spots to get American Water Works.
I'll make that motion.
The motion is our second. Second, any other discussion?
Which, which one are we talking about? He had two, he had two. There was, uh, one we just got, and there was one that was before too, so I'm just wondering which one we're talking about.
Both of them? Right?
No, he's talking about the American Water Works. That's what we were going to go with. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, American Water Works.
Okay, very good.
We had a quote last week. We said that we, we would have this. That's the confusion.
Any other, Todd, you got something?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, um, there's maybe Aaron, we, there's no, uh, we, we don't have to take the low bid and correct in a situation like this.
On the sidewalk?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
I would just.
I mean, uh, we have a lower bid of only twenty-eight dollars, I can get that, but then we added, this other portion.
Yeah. The other bit didn't have that.
Okay. But, no, I'm okay with American Water Works, so. Okay.
Roll call, Todd?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Sydney? Jim?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes.
Do you want me to call?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Or any with them, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, discussion, possible action on county home property in New Haven?
Well, Aaron pretty much summed it up in his section, and, and don't know if we needed to take action on him going and doing what he needs to do.
Just wait for Aaron's next week's.
Yep.
I know one I want to find out, and, um.
Alright.
So we'll just table it for next week.
Next week.
Thank you.
Alright. Well, that's not getting us closer. Treasurer report, treasurer's monthly report for September?
Shannon's online. Maybe she's running down now.
Every minute, uh.
Should I be running down?
Usually goes through it.
Do I go to the auditors?
Approve the treasurer's report for.
Your discussion was not as long as I thought it was going to be.
Well, we're waiting for nine o'clock, so we got.
Oh, you skipped around. Alright, um, my monthly report for September. Well, I have, a lot must happen, of course, busy month. My own vehicle fees to pay to the state were twenty-two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-four-sixty-eight-fifty-four. Of that, the county receipt got to keep ten-thousand-one-hundred-seventy-two. Postage to the general basic fund was nine-hundred-and-forty dollars and one cent. And driver's license fees to the county were fourteen-sixty-three. We issued two-hundred-and-nine driver's licenses. Of those, nine of them were out of county individuals, so they paid a ten-dollar convenience fee. Not a lot, some counties get four to five hundred a month. Those were the ones that pushed that legislation, but it is, it's nice when you have someone that doesn't pay property taxes in the county, and they pay the ten-dollar convenience fee. There is legislation proposed for next year that when individuals do drive tests, that there would be a fee connected to that when they register for the test, when they sign up to take the test, because, um, there's a lot of individuals that either no-show, and they take in a spot because we don't let people sign up unless they pass their tests, and then they're ready to drive, and then, um, they might not be happy with the time that they have with us, so they go somewhere else, and then they don't cancel for us, and then out of our nine drives a week, one of them gets no, you know, no call, no show. So there is a proposal in legislation. We're a smaller county, there's bigger counties, and it happens a lot more, and so, they're talking about adding a fee to that for when they register for the appointments to pay, which a lot of other states do. I know we have individuals from out of state that come in, and they're surprised we don't have a fee connected to that, because one person is doing a drive test. Cassie, who does the main drive test right now, um, she's out of the office for thirty to forty-five minutes. Guaranteed. And then depending on what happens in the drive, they go into the, um, side office and conference room, and they discuss the drive and what happened and everything. So, it could be up to an hour that her, her time is taken for that, so it is a lot of time away from the counter, waiting on other customers. And then if no one shows up, then it's wasted time because someone else could have driven at that time, so. That's just so you know for future reference, that is something's coming down for a proposal for the treasurers. Organ donor paid to the state one-hundred-and-forty dollars, thirty-five cents. New registration fee paid to the state, one-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-six-thirty-seven-fifty-nine. And of that, we got two-hundred-and-five dollars and fifteen cents. Money retained by Mitchell County was twelve-thousand-eight-seventy-sixteen total. Property taxes collected last month was eleven-million-one-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and forty-four cents. Um, I did make a note there of that the treasurer's orders, which will go out on the fourteenth, was six-million-seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand-nine-fifty-one-forty-eight. So, that's the money that we collected from the colleges, for on behalf of the colleges, schools, townships, hospitals, so. No penalties collected this month, or last month. Special assessments was nine-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-fifty-two and eleven cents. Majority of that is from ballot for the pre-treatment plan, bond payment. Tax home certificates redeemed were four at six-thousand-four-eighty-five dollars, sixty-four cents, and prepaid taxes, five-sixty-six-oh-three. That's people that pay both halves, and sometimes their math isn't quite right. If it's under fifty to, um, fifty dollars, we just automatically put it towards next year's payment. If it's more than that, we had one that was two-hundred and one that was a hundred. We do call the individuals and verify with them that it's okay. Usually it is a farmer, and once they cut a check, they really don't like to cut a new check because then bookkeeping gets a little off, so they would prefer, we usually just put it on the same, if it's, um, we can find out which acre or whatever it is, if they accountable for acres by their accounting, we put the prepaid ta, payment onto the same acreage farmland, so that they're, they did really do pay taxes, so their books are correct. It's just they're paying it towards next year, so. Interest on investments was thirty-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-three-fifty-five. And miscellaneous receipts from county department's process was forty-three, in the amount of six-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixteen-ninety-seven. So the total revenues processed was thirteen-million-two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-one-hundred-two dollars and fifty-four cents. Any questions? It's crazy. A good year for collecting. People were really good. We worked great with Amy. Farmland did go up considerably because the CSR rating, I don't, it was like seventeen dollars an acre, and now it went up seven dollars an acre, so it went up to twenty-four. And then, but their credit rollback increased, but it didn't offset. So we have a lot of people that were interested. I'm wondering why that happened, why their taxes went up. Um, same, so Amy gave us a nice sheet that explained it, so I think it's better, we could just send them over to their office, but sometimes people feel, get really frustrated when you're saying like, oh, you need to go talk to this office. So Amy did give us the paper, so if individuals were concerned about why the taxes went up, we were able to say this is the reason, and we would give them a copy of it, and then you know, if you have more questions, um, we don't understand it all, so you can go talk to the assessors, but I feel, um, people feel more confident in what's going on if you don't kind of pass the buck. So Amy and I talked, and she gave me the copy of the sheet. The increase in property taxes with the elderly credit exemption, with the elderly exemption for over sixty-five, there's a lot of individuals that were upset because their taxes went up, but they were eligible for this exemption. But once we talked through it and explained to them, you know, your taxes would have gone up a lot more. Because, but the exemption did offset it by like a hundred and sixty dollars for people in those age. So then they, they go away a little bit more happy, not thrilled, but, um, we try to be proactive when people are complaining. We don't just send them to another office if we can, because I feel like, it, it does feel like you're passing the buck, and then they kind of get more frustrated as they're leaving your office, knowing they've got to go talk to somebody else. So we try to be a team that way, so I think that's helped. We probably passed out a dozen of those sheets with Amy for me, so it was really nice to have those. Do appreciate that.
There you are. Any questions for the treasurer's report? Motion to approve the September treasurer's report?
Some.
Motion is our second.
Our second.
Any other discussion?
Roll call, Jim?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Sydney?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve the auditor's quarterly report? Did you have that?
Didn't have to.
I can't see it anymore.
Give it to me, ma'am.
We have a auditor's quarterly report of two-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and fifty cents.
I'll move to make that motion.
Motion is our second.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Roll call, Sydney?
Aye.
Mark?
Gary?
Todd?
Aye?
Mike?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Two minutes.
Yeah, we got two minutes. We have enough time to do the discussion of possible action on some middle, on closeout documents.
Yeah, we can try that. That should be fast. Uh, I talked with you guys about closeout before. It was in the packet as far as what the closeout documents are. You, you receive them. Uh, I've signed them, but have not submitted it yet. I wanted to run it through the board first, so that's, that's it.
And we're all done with that heating and air conditioning unit?
Yep, but other than, uh, continuing to fine tune things as needed, uh, nothing has really changed since last week, but it's not that they've just left us in the, in no man's land. I mean, they're, they're still working on things as needed. That's what the warranty documents of that closeout documents show also, is those extended warranties.
Yep. All righty, we have a motion to approve the closeout documents. Motion is our second. Our second, second. Any other discussion?
Roll call Jim?
Aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
All right.
I will be sending them to the contractor then, so.
All right, thank you. And now, public hearing on fiscal year twenty five budget amendment. We'll open the public hearing at nine o'clock. Any oral or written comments received? I had none. None?
None.
No? No? Rachel, nobody sent?
No.
No? Perfect. Close the meeting, close the hearing at nine oh one? And approve the appropriation resolution of twelve forty five dash twenty four? We'll do these expenditures and revenue if you'd like or not. Now, a motion to approve the resolution twelve forty five dash twenty four?
Seven.
The motion is our second. Our second. Any other discussion?
Roll call Jim?
Aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Motion passes. Move on to discussion on IRA opportunity.
Okay, let's see here. Let me bring it up on the screen. Okay, so we were talking about the Inflation Reduction Act opportunity that we've got to get some money back from that project. Excuse me. And I sent an email to, well, done a number of emails and also did some research in regards to if there's a conflict that came up with the board as far as if we can do both things. From my research, it showed that they're two independent programs and so there was no conflicts as far as what I could see. Now, this Energy Tax Savers, this guy, this guy's name is Jacob. He also in an earlier mail to us said that their firm has not found any conflicts in regards to this, but there's something that I did see, no, this came from that superintendent. He said that, I'll cut it short. So our, our project closed out October or September thirtieth and there was question that you might have to file with the IRS after your project closes out. So my question to him was, does that mean that we file this fiscal year because it closed out or do we file in a calendar year or whatever? And his comments were that they adopted a form for state and local governments to file for this. And there's two steps. It's pre-filing and then you file for your project. And if you pre-file on or around January and then one to four months, you'll receive a registration number. So I'm reading this as I'm talking, guys. So if we chose a calendar year, hold on a second. So if we chose calendar year, we'd receive a check as early as July of twenty five. If we chose fiscal year, we'd receive a check January one of twenty six. So long story short, we're really not going to be doing anything in the, with this until after the first of the year. And Vic is the consultant that's been working with us in regards to closing this project out and inspecting for it. Conversation with him was that he also felt it would be best if, and we would be hiring him also, so he's not, it's good that he's letting us know that. Lost my train of thought. We probably should wait until after the election because something that changes in DC could actually change programs that are happening. So wait for after the election and then also this Energy Tax Saver said wait till after the first of the year. So really, there's nothing that we need to do right offhand, except research and see if this is something that we want to do. That's all I've got.
I kind of looked into it some too and I didn't find no reason. You can't do both either. I mean, they don't say it, so yeah.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan. But ain't it if the money's gone, it's gone?
Well, that could be, you know, and it would be kind of like a change in administration also. It would be, they wouldn't renew it. If, if a new administration didn't want to do this, they wouldn't renew it so that money would be gone. But the reasons that I've had was that there was billions pumped into this as far as for the country to actually do green, green energy projects. And at first it was for private and commercial businesses and then they extended it into public domains like what we have. So a new administration possibly, I mean, the same administration would possibly just renew it and just pump more money into it. You know, who knows how that would go, but.
Yeah. I didn't know either if the carbon pipeline thing would draw out of it, you know? That's green.
That's a real good point and I'm sure, I'm sure there are people that are looking into that, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, okay.
Jim, I have a question. That superintendent had mentioned that digging for that tax number, I believe it was, is difficult with that Vic work on that between now and the first of the year, would we wait?
It sounds like we just, from what this Jacob sent me, we should just wait. I'll look this over a little closer, but I just got the impression that we should wait till after the first of the year. But he also did say that those, these two people, this Jacob and that Vic, that's what we are paying them for is to, for that process to do that, so. Yeah, I'll look at that a little more closer to Todd and see if that's something, but I get the impression that we have to wait till the first of the year. I'll have more information for you after I study it a little bit more, okay?
Yeah, and I'll keep looking at it too myself, so.
Okay.
Mike's looking into it too, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Don't break the plan, yeah.
You bet.
All righty. I have no meetings attended?
I had nothing.
I had Vanfield, we went over year end budget. That was pretty much all we went over, really. And then I watched the meeting and they were discussing letters to send out to counties as far as donations. That was being discussed.
I had a meeting this week. Shell Rock Watershed meeting. They're still being the new watershed. They don't have many funds. They're applying for grants and they teamed up with the Winnebago Watershed to, they have better people that write better grants, I guess, so they hopefully get some more money in their bank to do some projects. That's all I had. I had none. Um, nerve management plan update?
There's one for Fred Cashmere, thirty three twenty eight, forty fourth Street, High School.
All right. Public comments? Any public comments? Got here just in time to adjourn the meeting at nine ten.